We went to Limpopo.
We were in Limpopo.
We have been to KwaZulu-Natal.
We were in KwaZulu-Natal.
We have been to Haute.
We were in Haute.
We are now in the northwest.
We will descend to the eastern Cape.
Free State. Northern Cape and western Cape. We are consulting the people of South Africa on climate change. We are introducing a bill as parliament. Now we don't want to stay in Cape Town and make laws that affect the people of South Africa without speaking to the people of South Africa. So this is not our meeting, it is your meeting. Are we in the right meeting?
Yes.
I want to check because...
You look so beautiful people, as if you actually have come to the wedding. So are you not dressed up for the wedding perhaps?
Okay.
Alright.
Before we do anything else... We have been to KwaZulu-Natal. We have been to Haute. We are now in the northwest. We will descend to the eastern Cape. Free State. Northern Cape and western Cape. We are consulting the people of South Africa on climate change. We are introducing a bill as parliament. Now we don't want to stay in Cape Town and make laws that affect the people of South Africa without speaking to the people of South Africa. So this is not our meeting, it is your meeting. Are we in the right meeting? I want to check because...
You look so beautiful people, as if you actually have come to the wedding. So are you not dressed up for the wedding perhaps?
Okay.
Alright.
Before we do anything else...
Okay, before we do anything else, all men must please remove your hats for the national anthem.
Thank you, thank you very much. Two things first. It's going to be very important that we must smile because we are live on TV. They can tune in... DSTV 408.
Tell them at home to tune in onto channel 408 of DSTV.
You are live on parliamentary communication channels, Twitter, WhatsApp, Facebook and 408. I want to take this opportunity to introduce this team that is here. On my left is Honorable Darmini. Honorable Darmini is a member of the portfolio committee and a member of parliament. Honorable Darmini represents the ANC in parliament. Next to me is Honorable Mbatha. Honorable Mbatha is also a member of parliament, she and Honorable Darmini hail from Haute. On my far right is Honorable Mthunu. Honorable Mthunu represents the ANC in parliament, she hails from KwaZulu-Natal and she's a member of this committee. Next to her is Honorable Ganso. Honorable Ganso hails from the eastern Cape, she represents the ANC. She's also a member of this committee and a member of parliament. Do I have to introduce the gentleman next to me?
You don't know him?
Hey, Mr. Stock, how are you? Good, good. Yeah, really good, Mr. Stock. Like I said. I think Mr. Stock wants to be a member of this committee. Majoro, when we were consulting the people of South Africa on the National Forest Amendment Bill and we came to the northwest, we visited, I think, three regions. Mr. Stock was in every... public consultation. Now we are here, Mr. Stock is here again. I suspect tomorrow when we go to church, he's also going to join us. It's Palm Sunday, Mr. Stock, tomorrow, so you are joining us there? Oh. Right, next to me is the executive mayor of the city of Mahike. As we entered here, Chileca wanted to introduce me to the mayor. Me, the mayor forgot about Chileca and started discussing our own things. And late after ten minutes, we remembered that she wanted to introduce us to each other. So I took that opportunity to introduce her to the mayor.
He is a homeboy from this place? Son of the soil, son of the soil. You are the son of the soil, yes, me too.
Always.
Yeah.
Alright, that is why I told you. Honorable Darmini speaks Zulu. Honorable Mbatha speaks Zulu. Honorable Mthunu speaks Zulu. Honorable Ganso speaks Xhosa.
His name is Teco.
Alright. Yesterday we were in Kleksdorp. And I asked what language do they speak there? They spoke Alabama.
So we were in Alabama.
And they said they speak Afrikaans. They thought I don't know Afrikaans. He had me like a whore. I kept saying Afrikaans. And my tata kept asking me to speak Afrikaans.
Now the problem is the people whom I am with them, they don't understand these languages. Even you yourself, mayor, when you welcome us, please speak Xhosa so that they cannot understand what you're saying.
Oh, okay. We have apologies of other members of the committee. We have the apology of Honorable Winkler, Honorable Bryant, Honorable Weber from the DA. We have an apology of Honorable Singh from the IFP. The apology of Honorable Holomis of the UDM. And the apology of Honorable Puthen of the EFF. They would have loved to be here. But due to unforeseen circumstances, they can't. But be that as it may, we are proceeding. But with us, there is a big team of parliament staff. And representatives of the department. If I introduce them one by one, it means we will have to book as majoro so that we sleep here. So I'm going to request all of them to rise, parliamentary protection services, the interpretation, representatives of the department and all of them. Yeah. Thank you very much. We... We are now moving.
I apologize for having started a bit late.
It was not intentional, Executive Mayor.
We came from Rustenburg. I don't understand how. We were working in Kleksdorp, we slept in Rustenburg and had to come here, I don't understand how. And then I would have loved us to have been here during that week of Mahika Amahike. We were going to dance to come.
But that's fine, let's proceed. I want to invite the executive mayor.
I want to invite our executive mayor to tell us whether we welcome here or not.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
To tell us literally whether the dogs have been chained.
Good. Executive Mayor.
Greetings everyone. How are you all? I want to hear from your voices that you indeed are fine. Greetings. How are you? I would like to take this opportunity to say thank you to our chair, Mr. Mudise. Mr. Mudise has already explained himself that he hails from this place. So we don't have to ask anything more, we can only tell that from his language.
These are members of parliament also that we take this opportunity to welcome you here in Mahiking. We call it the city of goodwill.
So the city of goodwill.
Someone said used to, who said that? Who said used to? Used to be.
Okay, it looks like the sound I'm hearing is coming from the cameras.
Now, as I was singing, let me repeat, the city of goodwill.
So the person mustn't say it was, it used to be. I also don't understand, Mr. Mudise, that you came here to hold a public hearing in Mahiking but you had to sleep in Rustenburg.
We want you as a national assembly, as a South African parliament, also to support our BNB's and hotels.
And then put your petrol ratchet in Mahiking. And buy food in Mahiking. Everything that you do, you must do it in Mahiking where you came.
This is part of promoting our local economy as well. Last time, when we were attending another public hearing, last time, civic center. They said we must know in every single place.
So they must know where they're going.
Even Google who's the mayor of the town, what is the town known about or known for. Now, I believe Mahiking is the seat of government.
Now you came here in Mahiking as the seat of government.
This is the town, a historical town. Where we pride ourselves with our history.
So let me take this opportunity to welcome you all in Mahiking.
And I hope you'll enjoy your stay. But don't just enjoy your stay by just sitting down, but enjoy your stay to participate as well.
So we came here so that we can be able to explain things well. Before we conduct any public hearings, there has to be a... An advance arrangement for us to come first, to workshop the people and explain to them exactly the main objective of those public hearings, exactly under what reasons do we want to conduct them.
Now, public hearings.
That's where legislation is made.
The parliament exists for three purposes, public participation, lawmaking and oversight. Now, what's the plan?
This is where we start.
Including even other government institutions such as your nurses and others. We have to simplify everything, Chairperson.
Even in other organizations such as NESA and others, when people, perhaps they are going to increase their tariffs or maybe related to what they are doing, they have to speak to the people first and tell them the reasons why they are going to come up with all those changes. So such like public hearings will be of a very great benefit to them.
My height is short, I would want my speech to be the same height.
Often I'm the person who speaks a lot.
Now today we are here with regard to the...
So most of us know, for an example... That nature is now different than how it was in the former times. Sometimes it rains in winter and then sometimes we see snow at a time when it is not time for it. Sometimes we see flowers which we are not really used to.
I think since the bonnie could deal funny, for example, for a career, it's just in the recent past.
You may have seen in DL Pan as to what has happened just in Bushenjana. We went there, Chairperson, and we saw how rains have destroyed people's homes.
It's a farming community, it means even the livestock and also crops of people were destroyed by this flood. The bonnie could case it and I think it was last year if I'm not mistaken.
We saw this also in KZN if I'm not mistaken, it was last year. In chaotic conditions of weather which we don't actually know their real cause.
Now they are seeing scientists or people who are doing these investigations.
They are, they say that we are the ones who are actually destroying our nature. And then there is something up there in the sky.
What I've learned, it's a lot of sprays, it's a lot of perfume, just read on the side, but it's free from CFC.
The sprays, you can see when you read them, they are written free from sea.
Now, it means or even carbon emissions. They are also contributing to destroying of our nature.
So basically, for an example, even when we put petrol in our cars. Some of them are being emitted from madirelo. And some of them is like people said they felt a light.
But this includes everything that speaks about nature, which some of us, I know not all of us, some of us who believe in God, they gave us this nature and we have to protect it.
Now there is a new village, Chairperson, called Lomanyane.
Not a new village, this is a village.
So there is water actually oozing underneath people's homes.
These are some of the things there, I don't know what to call it, I nearly said the madness of nature but it's something which is unnatural. Now since...
Now, why we are here is because there is a bill that has been brought before us. So we can see that some of you have these papers, even though we didn't have the workshop. To come and support this bill so that we can be able to protect our own nature.
About eleven official languages.
So be free, don't be shy, the only person who must be shy here, Chairperson, is I myself.
I know there's been other agreements, it's a board, Paris Agreement or Paris Accord.
So then, so that we can be able to know exactly what we want to achieve.
I thought maybe...
So I thought even in that case, it will be good if you can take a little bit of some time to explain and describe this international Paris Accord so that we know exactly what it's related to.
Now, an accord is an agreement between amongst all the nations that met in Paris. But I remember one of the supposed biggest nations in the world, the USA.
So I didn't want to go too deep, Mr. Chair, but now I'm just something copying up in my mind, I remember that with regards to an agreement like this that was done. The former president of the United States, Donald Trump, actually withdrew from that agreement.
But we want every single nation in the world, whether you are America, you are Russia, you are South Africa, all the nations must support to protect our nature and our climate. Now you are truly welcoming Mahiking from all the sectors, I see business, the farmers who falls under the jurisdiction of Mahiking, young people, old people.
Thank you very much, Majoro.
I have spoken about the issue of dogs, you did not mention it.
I suspect the dogs are on the loose. Because I heard the mayor speaking about Kyoto Protocol and Paris Agreement, then I forgot that we are in Mahiking. Then I forgot that we're in Mahigeng.
But it tells you that the people of Mahigeng are inclined. About the subject matter which brought us here today.
I must apologize, our advance team might not have reached many of you. And Majoro, this issue is raised everywhere we go. There is a request from the people of South Africa that we need to interact them way before we come and consult them. They must know what exactly are they going to speak about. And we agree, we agree over agreed. Because you can't, you can't study today and write an exam today. You, you know the outcomes. Are we agreed?
But now that we are here, may we please continue?
Are we agreed?
Yes.
Right. I want to appreciate your presence, all of you. As the mayor has said, everyone is allowed to participate here. This is not a tick box exercise. Climate change affects all of us. It affects councillors too. And special welcome to councillors here. What is councillors' intention?
May I be assisted?
What is councillors' intention? Yeah. But councillors, special greetings to yourself and welcome. The youth, the elders, the sectors, all of them.
You are most welcome.
Welcome to parliament. Now, we have brought parliament from Cape Town to Mahigeng.
The mayor says we must put in petrol here. We are going to get stuck because if we came with cars with empty tanks, we wouldn't be here. But we can see what we can do, at least put in something.
I want to invite Honorable Mbata. To give us an overview of this climate change bill. And the purpose of this public hearings. After that, we'll invite Mr. Ramaru. To go a bit into detail on what this bill entails. They have a tendency to speak a lot, these two people.
Today, I'm going to be very strict. I am going to allow them only five minutes. Thank you, Chair. Greetings to the House at large. Starting with the Chairperson of our committee. Our mayor. Our MPs here. The Department of DFFI. And everyone here. I just wanted to prove a point to the Chairperson that I can converse in Sutu. Mine is very short. Let me start doing the overview remarks and purpose of public hearing on climate change bill number eighty-nine of two thousand and two. Climate change is impacting South Africa. Causing droughts. Crop failures. Livestock deaths. And loss of life from floods and heat waves. Vulnerability in areas such as biodiversity. Water. And health. Is worsening poverty, unemployment, and inequality. Collaboration between different stakeholders and all tiers of government is necessary. It is necessary to reduce these vulnerabilities, to reduce the drivers of climate change. And improve communication and awareness. Our constitution as well as our international agreements. Such as Kyoto Protocol and Paris Agreements. Compels us to take steps to reduce carbon emissions. And improve lives under climate change conditions. This meeting is part of the first process of developing overarching legislation to address the realities of climate change. The climate change bill is thus the first draft of legislation specific to climate change in South Africa. And public input is essential to formulate a law that aligns with the aspirations of every citizen of the country. Therefore, feel free to express your views on any aspect of this bill, such as definition, policy alignment, institutional arrangement, climate responses by provinces and municipalities. Penalties, and Transitional Arrangements. Please be assured that your views matter to us as parliament. The departmental official will highlight the key aspects of the bill. I thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mbata. Mr. Ramaru.
You saw Honorable Mbata did not take a lot of time.
You can take this one. Thank you, Chair. Greetings to you, Chair, Honorable Members.
I will be very brief just to outline the details of the climate change bill.
We started the development of the climate change bill in twenty eighteen and we consulted across all the country in all the provinces, including here. This will be the primary law that will regulate all climate change-related activities in the country. The bill has six chapters. The first chapter focuses on the objective of the bill, which covers both mitigation and adaptation. Adaptation simply means our ability to cope with the challenges of climate change, whereas mitigation is about the reduction of the greenhouse gases. The main objective is to enable coordination across all the spheres of the society to address the issues of adaptation and greenhouse gas emission reduction in the country. This bill will also enable us as a country to be able to fulfill our obligation in the Paris Agreement, which is the international agreement where countries have agreed to address the issues of climate change. The second chapter focuses on institutional mechanism. And on the institutional mechanism, it empowers both the provincial forum on climate change, the local forum on climate change to coordinate and implement climate change intervention in the provinces as well as in the local sphere. This chapter further establishes the Presidential Climate Commission, which is another structure that will help with the coordination and advisory on climate change matters. The third chapter focuses on the response by provinces and the municipalities. And this chapter empowers the MEC and the executive met can be able to undertake risk and vulnerability assessment and develop plans to address the issues of climate change in the province and in the local sphere. and coordinate implementation of those strategies to respond to climate change. The fourth chapter focuses on the national adaptation planning, which empowers minister to develop the national adaptation strategy that coordinate all spheres of government to respond to issues of climate change. The fifth chapter focuses on the greenhouse gas removals, which focuses on the reduction of the greenhouse gas emissions. On this chapter, the minister will be empowered to develop, amongst other things, the sectoral emission targets, which will provide target to other sectors on how will they contribute towards reducing the greenhouse gas emissions. The minister will also be empowered to set what we call the carbon budget, which simply means the limit upon which the companies can be able to only emit their greenhouse gas emission with the effort to ensure that we are able to cap our greenhouse gas emissions in the country. which are going to be central towards the implementation of the climate change bill. Me kaholo ya bo ratari yonae i ama nafana fa le melawana e tlen kohamiuwa e tlen khudira ja kaka rolo, ya mula oh kota diwangao one wa mulautsumongo onu wa kolaola eh, di petochoza, ma emo, apetocho ya luapi.
This will include regulations among other things compliance with the carbon budget, monitoring and evaluation as well as international reporting.
So senesese tabesa ama nanglo ho bonakora tekanyo zoe e beilwen, ya fikalela, wakamanza ma hui kobela melaw e khomilwen eh, moho le kore, khudira sa ne jalo ki di garo zedi farlohanen za di naha, zedi farlohanen, ilen kore eh, batlakonako eh, rarabolola le kulepalepanale bu tatajono.
In summary, this bill will be very important for us as a country to address all challenges associated with climate change and will enable us to of course achieve our commitment to the international agreement as the Executive Mayor started alluding to some of this. Thank you.
Me kabukuzwane so se tabesi tusa kore eh, mulautsumongo onu o innetiriso yakono, kono ya kolaola bu tatajono jor nalejone, me lo khudira khasama ikara belo arona a kore, re dire tum, di lo tumalanongle, tumalanoya bu, ya bu di chaba chaba, ya kwa Paris, ilenyakhomiuwa kore ek esalo marajo, ki di naha kaho farlohanaja zoné. Re ale bocha.
At least he did not disappoint me.
Hawa, hawanshabisa.
Lisi.
Oh, ktlelele.
Eh, thank you very much Mr. Ramaru and Honorable Mbaata.
Re Ramaru ra kulebocha, lewena mutlumpeki mbata.
Eh, lebautwilega.
So you heard them nicely, have you?
Eh, le sho.
Alwachoma misaha.
Agona medzi, kere batla medzi.
Eh, looks like there is no water. Do you need water?
Ta medzi kia. Yeah. Eh, Honorable Lamini, how do we move forward?
Eh, mutlumpeki Lamini ra khutwa lajange koto hafa.
Now, thank you very much Chair.
Kialebocha, mutlula stulo.
Good morning everybody.
Dumelang lo chaba khaitso.
No, don't look at your watch. It's still morning for me.
Eh, iloske la leba di watcha zalona, isatanirlemo na konya momuso.
My task will be very simple but firstly I must thank you all.
Bi karawe lo jobi fano fa itlo kona jobu kuzwane feela meki batlakosimula kahole lebocha loche.
And thank the Mayor for allowing us to come to this multi papers hall.
Le kulebocha, ratropo koba arlicile kora retemo holongeno.
All the places where I go they say, "We don't see you, we just only hear the voice."
Eh, moma filo kwa charya mo kona bar e harolo bo ni ruka feela manje alona.
At least today there's a light on top of me, you can see me now.
Khumpionolo kona khumpona kona lelebone mo kudi mahani.
Thank you very much Mayor.
Kya kulebocha eh, eh, mutula eh, ratropo.
All of us we have the copies of the bill.
Ro kere tchere di copyza mulautsumo.
Some of you have read it from yesterday, others have read it from today.
Bangoli sumulose kobe bala maabani, bangoli sumulose kobe bala khumpie.
We really appreciate that one.
Re, ana ne la so fe la tata.
Now, how are we going to work? It's very simple.
Janu ritlo khudira jana, kasa le mu khufufela.
It's a house rule.
Eh, ki melawana ritlo khudira kayo.
What we'll do is that now, when the Chairperson open up.
Seno ritlo khudira kore etaraha eh, mutula stulo alubulela chono.
To get everybody who want to speak about the bill.
Ya, kore monglemo yo batlan kubuwa kama mulautsumo abuwa kawa one.
You should introduce yourself.
Re batlakor, ui, kitisi pele kore koyena ma.
If your name is Everlasting Dotayami.
Ha ilo kore lina laha koe everlasting eh, Dotayami.
You must say so.
Ubue fe la jalo.
Secondly.
Sabo bedi.
You must be able to say, "I agree with the bill" or "I don't agree with the bill."
Re batlakor othalo se ore ki tumalanale mulauteo onu onu mulautsumongo onu onu, kota ha ki tumalanelo onu.
Then you can proceed to speak any language that you like.
Obokana, oachelapelo kubuwa kapuo epe fe la ewu batlan kubuwa kayo.
Don't forget to raise your hand so that you can be recognized, so that you can get a seat.
Oh, skawale bala kora ujokotaka kozaleza le zoro, kore ruku soupe, kore kona kona mo kose ngosa di tulotele.
I know all of you have prepared yourself to come and make contribution.
Ya, yizo koro loche litlo, li pa kenyadi se kota konsa di twayelo.
But the way we love you will only give you five minutes to say your contribution.
Me ritlo kolo naya, mitzozo ele mi thano fe la kuru lubu es, silo batlan kusebuwa.
If your contribution is more than twenty pages.
Ha ilo kore twayelo ya kahoko efe ta di zebese twenty.
We are allowed to give us a written submission.
Eh, o, le kellese kela koro okasi nyadi twayela za kahoko kahu di kuala fa fat.
One of our staff members around here will give you copies where you can do a written submission.
Mongo waba dirikarono ota lonaya di copy kaza di pampirize mo koto no lokana loa kona kuhu kuala di twayelo zalona.
Then these copies will be given to all of you, you must write down.
Eh, di kane wa, mo, loche fe la, ha ilo kora obata kuhu kuala mo koto.
Even for those who are going to do oral submission, they can get the copies and add what they want to say.
Totala leba ilonkore ba ikalezo kota konsa di twayela za bone kahu di bua, bagana ba okeza katse diwe, modipambirinzelu ritlo khudinewa.
Because I've been given five minutes to speak.
Yer kahoneloneleme mitzozo ele mi thano ya kubuwa.
When your five minutes has elapsed.
Fa, mitzozo ya kaha e mi thano ifedile.
The Chairperson will rise up with a smile.
Mo, dula sitilo ota ema kadi nao, ani, nyamosa fatsho.
That smile only reminds you to say, "Your time is up."
Mo, nyenyawa kaha ota bo ohoho pota kora na koyaha koe ifedile.
Go back to the seat where you come from.
Obokana ba boela kustilo se lo onzoko hosod.
Now, how are we going to make sure everybody speaks?
Janu ritlo khutama misajang kora monglemo wa bua.
We'll start with my right hand side.
Ri tlen khusimula kafa, le thagurinameleka famujeng.
We take five hands.
Re taya ma boho ale ma thano.
We'll come back to this side.
Re beru boela kafa le thagurinenele.
We take another five hands.
Re ya kota ya ma boho amang ale ma thano.
Please, don't stand up if at all you have not been recognized.
Soe, soe, losuke loa, emalo ya kuna fa le losa supiwa.
Then we'll allow everybody in this middle seat to speak.
Kaja ritlo kuleta bo tle baba ngomidi tilonzidi faharetzeninze kora ba kabua.
After that, if at all there's a need to get a second round, we'll do so.
Me hai, irisna kofita mo rebera, bone kona le choki ya kore, re zeye karolo ya bo bedi, irikle khudira fe la jalo ya kubiza baba.
I hope all of us we agree with this household.
Ki solafe la koro loke li tumalanale melawana enu irikle khudira kayo one.
Thank you very much.
Re ale bocha.
Eh, remutwilega.
So, you understood and heard him?
Eh, no, no, ra kabuwa kabuengwe, kile bolele zemos.
So there wasn't anywhere in which he was gonna speak in any other language as I told you.
And when he spoke about this wall and the light, ki moshebilesin le kavano kore, komo itwer. Cause Ronald Matata majoro zanzermule kore, olebe pendilo kabusu ewu.
So, yeah, and we also want to thank Mayor, a beautiful hall that has been entrusted for our use.
Yeah, languka mori, mori garamos.
La, la, eh, do you understand me?
Kore, koro olobe pendilo kabusu ewu re tume. Okay, we have said enough.
Ke rubile kulekani.
Eh, ko, kena kalo nayanon kore le bueleru.
It is now your time to speak to us?
Eh, Mr. Stock, did you hear Honorable Lamini? He says five minutes. Yeah, he says five minutes. I know you and your tendencies. In fact, Chileka, you must just give Mr. Stock, already you must give him something to write on.
Eh, kopa kora omone Chileka Restock, muaka kuali lanteng, erso fe la kura utwile kate five minutes fe la kubile jalo kerre Lamini.
Yeah, he says I must start on the right and note hands.
Then arisimuleka fa mujeng bahaitso, rekopa ma boho.
Can you then note hands?
So, arakabona ma boho.
Say you'll be the first. Say you'll be the second. You'll be the third. Ki wonas two emelezi zilu. Ororo nekisa obonisim, ta, ta mostulu.
Eh, oka boela komo rajalo ra isusu piu bele kustilo.
Kuapa. Eh, more hands.
Rekopa ma boho amang bahaitso, au keza kileng.
Kostulu mo le tanzibangwale information ya kahone. Eh, more hands on the right.
Ma boho amang kafa mujeng, kafa.
Re. Ose kera tabo mme tota.
I would like to see.
Sky tolog.
I would like to see ladies, I must say.
Oh yes, yes. Yeah, ito loge kha.
Ah, would like to see ladies also coming forth.
Yeah. Kera tabo mme.
So I really like them.
Ki batehuru ito loge yalo. Ki batahuri I would like to see ladies. Okay, let's come to the right.
Okay, a, a.
My brother.
On the left?
Left. Let's come to the left. More hands.
Eh, kafa mulime kafa bahaitso, aronale ma boho.
How many? How many do we need, Dion? Five. Moreena? Eh, ki wonaka listi ya hina bomme mo.
It looks like eh, this list doesn't have ladies in it.
More.
Why?
Bomme moma igembaka.
Where are the ladies? Where, where, where have they gone to?
Mr. Stock, are you aware that I'm noting hands? Eh, Honorable Gancho says you were disturbed by Chileka eh, and the train might pass you. Well, it will be a good thing though. It might very well. How many more do we need? Three. Okay, three hands, either on the left or on the right.
Alright.
Three more hands.
Eh, abo fe lo amararu matojo.
Me. Okay, two more hands. One. Two, one, one. One more hand. Ya tlala diksiaka ya.
You want to start then.
Kya godug. Okay, let's proceed.
Okay, arisole len.
Eh, my name is Patrick Direko from Wat'aid, Mafiki Muntiwa.
Len na, na linalama ki Patrick Direko kozama Wat'aid, momafiki momuntiwa.
I'd like to extend my gratitude to the National Assembly.
Eh, ki batlakolo lebochalo na kukuanobo se chaba.
Eh, what I want to say about climate change.
Se kene ki batlakosibuka petocho ya memo aluapi.
Climate change brought disaster in our lives.
Eh, petocho enu ya memo aluapi, itlisza masetapelo ma matelon arona.
I heard somebody speak about heat wave.
Bele kiu kulemo abuwa ka eh, heat wave, ilen mohote omoholo amarana.
When it is too hot.
Aho le mohote tata.
We must drink too much water.
Eh, re chana le kahora renmezi amanzi tata.
I support the bill.
Eh, ki cheseta mulautsumo.
Was on my heart.
Kapilo ya me yote. Kya, kialebocha, ke fedite.
Eh, my name is Abel Seahwa.
Eh, ilinalama ki Abel Seahwa.
His name spelled S E A.
Eh, se fanesame se pelitu akahora ke S E A.
K G.
K G.
W A.
W U A.
I'm from Twaying.
Me na ki tawo Twaying.
Wat'seven.
Ilen ko Wat'seven.
Eh, with all protocol observed.
Eh, kya kaha boche basiba amochetwe.
I would like to say first and foremost, I support the bill.
Ki batlakosimula fe la kutsumlo kona kota chalosa kore ki cheseta mulautsumongo onu.
It is very important to have this kind of a bill.
Eh, kobutlo kwa tata kora reneli mulautsumo wa mu fuda onu.
In our new democracy.
So kolo bo kolo mo demokrasi yonana incha.
Little as it is.
Meleha ili bubotana jo ilen jone.
We went as far as having an international relations with Paris.
Irile ranali eh, di kamanza budichaba chaba, eh, le Paris.
Inasmuch as we are the members of the ICC.
Kahonere le maloko a ICC.
That means we care for our people.
Se usiponsa kota taramehaka eh, baharona.
Now, when it comes to eh, the preservation of nature.
Jano mo kanya ya kusomarala kaho.
And the conservation of it.
Eh, le ho, le ho isireleza.
We are very concerned about our people that are affected by the areas that we have mines around.
Eh, re tsenyangataka baharona ba ilonkore ba amiwa ta, ba amehata da moma filo ilonkore anali me epo.
Especially our people in Mpomalanga.
So kolo bo kolo eh, baharona ba balenko Mpomalanga.
Where you have coal mines.
Ko, eh, ernanle me epo eh, idirisa mahala ting.
My concern is before the bill is going to be passed.
Janu se sen tsenyangke kore peleha mulautsumongo onu ote ngwa tiriso.
In the parliament.
Oko parlamenting.
I would want to submit that it should be very important that our people, post ninety-four to present, there must be a survey that has been done to our people that are affected by the emissions of the coal inasmuch as our people that were previously affected by asbestos somewhere in Kuruma.
So kene kara ta kore koe le koko, nklaya kore pele mulautsumongo onu ufiti siwa. Khudira di patisi sokaha, batu, bo tle ba ilonkore ba iloba amiwa ta ta kahonse diwa kadi kha.